All right. Five o'clock. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the May sixth, two thousand twenty-one School Committee Meeting in keeping with the ongoing emergency order from Governor Charlie Braker to limit gatherings and maximize social distancing. And under legislation passed to address remote board meetings during the emergency declaration, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom and broadcast live on Facebook. This meeting is open to the public. We'll take questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure that you include your full name and address. We'll do our best to answer all the questions, however, we will not read questions that have already been answered. Okay. First up is the regular meeting. Minutes from April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions, comments, edits? Okay, I make a motion to accept the regular School Committee Meeting minutes from April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a second?
O'Neil, second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right. Next up is the executive meeting minutes from April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Would anyone like them held for comments or edits at a later time? Okay. I make a motion to accept the executive meeting minutes but not release from April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Personnel change, retirement from the grade-three teacher at RO, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Yes, we have another personnel, excuse me, retirement. Robin Presentado began with Oliver Ames School, excuse me, with the Easton Public Schools in nineteen eighty-seven as a kindergarten teacher at the then Northeastern Grammar School. And over the years, she's taught kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Right now, she's teaching third grade at Richardson Olmsted. She was granted professional teaching status in nineteen ninety. And she's been with the district for a total of thirty-four years. She plans to retire on October twenty-fifth. And I was just at Richardson Olmsted this week and spoke to Ms. Presentado. She is very torn, as you can imagine, most staff are. She's very emotional about this change. She feels very strongly about the children. And of course, it's bittersweet. And the sweet part is that she has well-deserved time with her family and her extended family. So we wish her very well in her retirement. She unfortunately is unable to join us this evening. But Chair, you have her letter.
Yes, I do. Dear Dr. Cabral, I'm writing to inform you that I will be retiring on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. After thirty-four years of teaching, over the thirty-four years of service, I have taught kindergarten, first, second, and third grade across three buildings and countless superintendents, principals, and colleagues. I've made lifelong friends and connections with students throughout my thirty-four years of teaching. And I appreciate the knowledge that I have made an impact on countless students over the years. In my retirement, I'm looking forward to spending time with my children, my extended family, and traveling. I will miss the friendships I've made and the day-to-day connections with the students. Sincerely, Robin M. Presentado. Anyone have any comments?
Of course I do. My boys both had Robin for kindergarten at the Northeastern Grammar School way back when. So she was involved with my kids. And she's, she will be, she will be missed. She's a good teacher and they will miss her at RO.
Anyone else? Okay, I make a motion to accept with regrets the retirement of Robin M. Presentado effective October, where was it, twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right. And item four, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, we have a class, contemporary issues class, run by teacher Brian Gottsel. And they are working very hard to present a bill to the House. And as part of that class, they are continuing their research and have requested a little bit more time to get that information for you. So I would request that you table number four this evening. And I anticipate that they would be presenting to you at the May twentieth meeting, but they will let us know.
Okay. And that does require a vote, correct?
Yes.
So I make a motion to table item four, discussion of possible vote to make changes to the attendance policy filed JH. First reading, do I have a second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right. Item five, discussion of possible vote on the naming of the space at OA. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Leslie Fitzgerald reached out to Chair DeLuca when DeLuca, when Chair DeLuca was in that position about potentially naming space or spaces within the school for our departing beloved Principal Wes Paul at Oliver Ames. As he retires, there is a unique opportunity to honor and remember his twenty-two years of service, says Ms. Fitzgerald. A group of alumni, parents, teachers, and friends are raising funds in order to name a space for him. In this effort, they seek to contact as many students, past and present, as well as family and friends. Their goal is to raise one hundred thousand dollars. And they encourage everyone. I don't know, I shouldn't say because I don't know if they're still looking for donations, but I'm sure Ms. Fitzgerald can, can speak to that. All funds raised will be used to augment the learning environment at Oliver Ames. And I believe they have a Wes Paul Naming Project page on Facebook. But again, I'll let Ms. Fitzgerald speak to that. I want to make sure everybody's getting the most updated information possible. And Ms. Fitzgerald has been moved over to a panelist.
Put your on mute.
Welcome, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Sorry, I'm not super skilled at these. How's that? Can you hear me now?
That's great, yes, there you go, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. I do have a letter that I'm going to read a little bit from. We have come up with some spaces that we would like to present to you. And I appreciate the opportunity to bring them to you all. To the distinguished members of the Eastern School Committee, on behalf of alumni, parents, students, and friends of Oliver Ames High School and OA class of two thousand twenty-one, we present to you today the honoring of Principal Wes Paul with two potential naming opportunities for Oliver Ames High School. The Wes Paul Naming Project pledges twenty-two thousand dollars for the opportunity to name the main office complex at Oliver Ames High School. And the OA class of two thousand twenty-one pledges an amount of approximately a thousand dollars. It will be more, they are currently working on, unfortunately, all of the refunds from their deposits for their events that were supposed to be at the end of the year. And they won't be happening as planned, so they will be getting some money back. We will also be having more money trickle in, but those are the amounts that we have for sure at this moment. So they, they would like the opportunity to name the northwest, northwest entry at Oliver Ames High School. As Mr. Paul retires this June, the many students, staff, family, and friends of OAHS seek to honor him in a way that will allow him to be forever present in the building. Wes Paul has been with Oliver Ames from the approval of the new building project to its execution and throughout the many improvements and accomplishments that have happened within its walls over the last twenty-two years. He has worked tirelessly to keep Oliver Ames competitive academically while maintaining vocational curricula for students to pursue. The last two decades have seen an explosion of technology, social media, and cultural change. While instituting new and innovative programs to keep pace with these changes, Wes Paul also worked to create a safe and welcoming home for students and staff. Wes Paul's legacy is one as the dedicated patriarch of the Oliver Ames High School family. He cares deeply for his students but holds high expectations for them as well. Carla Goodman, former Eastern School Committee Chair and member of the Eastern Board of Selectmen summarized Wes Paul's impact on OAHS. He was principally responsible for integrating curriculum advances and student achievement. He was a principal motivator to engage students' concerns, ideas, suggestions through his innovation of a fifteen-minute blocks of time with the same group of students and teachers. His principal endeavors to support all the programs, athletics, school trips, science olympics, robotics, theater, music, and many other activities expanded throughout his tenure. His penchant at these endeavors was a demonstration of Principal Paul's view, a demonstration and creation of a well-rounded high school culture. Mostly, Mr. Paul was a man of high principles and carings, which by his very presence created the culture of a principle for all. And too many will become a lasting signature of his tenure. Yo-ay seniors wanted to honor and thank Mr. Paul for all they have experienced with him. As the class of two thousand twenty-one leaves OA, along with Mr. Paul this June, they felt the naming in his honor was the perfect choice for their class gift. To have Mr. Paul's name along with the class of twenty-one in a space is especially meaningful to them. For twenty-two years, Mr. Paul stood at the Northwest Entry to OA every day to greet and dismiss students. Naming this space will allow the class of twenty-one to share their memories of Mr. Paul with all the OA freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, also saying goodbye to him as well as with all the future students of Oliver Ames High School. We appreciate your consideration of the Wes Paul Naming Projects and OA class of twenty-one's donations in naming opportunities of the main office complex and the Northwest Entry. Thank you. Questions? I just want to make sure I wrote this part down, right? You're saying twenty-two thousand for the main office? And can you repeat to me again, the entrance way? I don't, I got confused. The number, the dollar amount? Yes. The class of twenty-one, they currently have one thousand dollars for sure in their account. It may, may go up to as high as five thousand after they, they're seeking all of their, the return of all their deposits from their events that got canceled due to COVID. Thank you. That was the previously, just FYI, the main office complex did have a price tag on it of twenty-five thousand dollars. The side door that the class of twenty-one name, never a priced naming space. So there was no number associated with that door. Okay, I'm gonna need some guidance from you.
And that just, Michelle?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? The northwest corner, that's the corner near Guidance Office, that's that parking lot on the curve, right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the northwest corner. I, I was just making sure that it wasn't in main office. I think it's a fabulous idea and I'm, I'm glad. I, I know you didn't get your six and six, but, you know.
Well, I mean, I think we did great under the circumstances and it was very quick. And with people not meeting anymore and you don't see people anymore, it's just a different, it's a totally different environment. So we are leaving our accounts open through June first. Like I said, I think that the Wes Paul Naming Project will also have a higher figure on their, their donation. And the class of twenty-one will as well.
Thank you, I'm in favor.
Any other questions? Caroline?
Well, it's not a question, I just want to say, Leslie, I so appreciate you doing this. I was really delighted when I saw, you know, the posting about it. And I, I think it's, really, no one is more deserving of spaces at Oliver Ames High School being named in their honor. So I am really grateful to you for undertaking this initiative.
No, you're very welcome. And I think in general, everyone, not in general, exclusively, everyone who has responded has felt the same way. And that's why we work so hard to make it happen, even though it was quick. Anyone else have comments, questions? No? Okay. I'm not quite sure how to proceed. I'm, I'm confused about how we figure the value of the spaces. Because I know this came up before with the auditorium and I'm not really sure how that works. I can speak to that a little bit, having been one of the former co-chairs of the naming campaign. The, the spaces that were all, as I said previously, tagged, those prices were set, I think, back in two thousand six or seven when we did a, a study on the whole project. We brought in a consultant. And we, there were various areas in the, in the building that we associated with a value. Those values have also been interpreted by the school committee over the years and allowed some flexibility. And also, the spaces that are, have not been previously tagged, per history, the, the amount that the group normally brings for those untagged spaces is generally accepted by the school committee because it's not a space that would have been named otherwise. And so that all, all of those additional namings are just extra money for Oliver Ames High School to use for their programming and students. Okay, so I'm looking at the naming campaign flyer. Is, is the office considered the main lobby? No, no, the main lobby would be the entrance, right there, at the parking lot by the, the fire and police. Yeah. That's the main lobby that you enter in right there. So the main office complex is the actual complex where the principal's office, the vice principal's office, the mailboxes are over there. You know, the main desk when you walk in, that whole kind of sweet, lack of a better word. Okay, so that's not on this list one? It, it was on the list. It was priced at twenty-five thousand dollars originally. It's, I don't know if you, I, I mean, I have all the papers. But it was main office slash administration, twenty-five thousand dollars. You got? Okay. At the top.
Yeah, Michelle, you're, you're not crazy. It's not, it's not in the published brochure that we have.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're not missing anything. It's not in there.
All right. Does someone want, want to make a motion? Caroline?
I, I don't know if we need two different votes. I, I might, I just for sort of clarity and, and cleanness, maybe we should do it in two votes. But I'd like to make a motion that we accept, well, the name for the main office complex of Wes Paul. I don't know if he'll want to do his full name or just Wes Paul. That would, should be, I think, his choice. But even though twenty-two thousand dollars is slightly less than the fee that was established some years ago, I think that it's a, my understanding is that the group will try to raise a little bit more money. But I certainly think, given the very significant discount that was given in a recent naming situation, that it would be entirely appropriate for us to accept twenty-two thousand and whatever else, you know, could be raised by the deadline.
Okay. You second?
I'll make a second.
All right. Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, and then the second space, does somebody?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for the class of twenty-twenty-one to donate the Northwest door area for, in Wes Paul's name.
Okay. I'll second.
For one thousand dollars possibly more.
Okay, I'll second. Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much for joining us.
Uh, Ms. Fitzgerald? I'm sorry, before you wrap up, if I could just, first of all, thank you. On behalf of all the students that will benefit from, from the funds, Wes Paul's legacy lives on and he continues to positively impact students through this donation. I'm sure, you know, we can see that by the very quick turnaround on this. So thank you for all of your efforts on that. And I, I might suggest maybe it's cosmic in some way, that it's twenty-two thousand and he's been with us for twenty-two years. At the risk of, at the risk of messing with the cosmos, would you mind sharing, just because this is going to be recorded and some people may be watching, where they can go to contribute if they do wish to do that before, I think you said it was closed on June first? Could you share that information with people?
Correct. So we, we currently, we previously set a deadline in May. And tonight, I'm going to go on and extend it to, to June first, just so that anyone, anything that trickles in after this information gets out can be included in the, so we have a Facebook page, just Wes Paul Naming Project on Facebook. You can Venmo at Wes Paul Naming Project. Type that right in to the one in Venmo. And then also, the Bank of Easton has our account set up. And you can either mail or go into the Bank of Easton to contribute there. And also on the Facebook page, in addition to Dr. Goodman's comments, there are some photos and memories and comments by other people who have been in the building and worked with Mr. Paul over the years. And a couple of parent comments, some Langwater Farm pictures and video. So it's, I couldn't agree more with your, all your thoughts of how deserving he is. And it was a privilege to work on the project.
Nice, well, I think people, even if you've already donated, I would encourage people to go on there and see that. It sounds like there's some really, really lovely sentiments and messages on there. So thank you again, very much.
Thank you for having me. Have a good night, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, district updates. Dr. Cabral?
Thanks, so the district updates, for this year anyway, have been centered around COVID. I'm just going to, we don't have too much, but I would like to review a couple of things and bring something else to your attention. So first, I wanted to remind people that at our last School Committee Meeting, we did adjust the definition of who needs to quarantine. We're still updating our websites and information on that. So the playbook, we're still updating that. But that should be up to date very soon. And that would reflect that we are also taking on what Desi and the Department of Public Health has suggested, which is close contacts are still, anyone within six feet, six feet and under of someone who is COVID positive. But for purposes of quarantining, any students between three and six feet, even though they've been, they will be considered a close contact, even though we're still mandated to report that to the state and to their parents, they will, it will be optional for them to quarantine. Anyone at three feet and under from an infected person, it will be a mandatory quarantine. So that is not new, but we are trying to put all this information together for parents to make it clear. And it's been communicated at the school level as well. So I just wanted to repeat, take the opportunity to repeat any changes as much as possible, since there have been so many changes this school year. Also, there has been a little bit of confusion. The commissioner's timeline for high schools returning is coming up. I think it's May nineteenth or eighteenth or something. Easton Public Schools, of course, we had all of our middle school and high school students return on April twenty-sixth. So when people see that, I don't want them to think that that is another deadline that they have to respond to or anything that's just being pushed out in the media because many districts did not bring their, their high school students back until that date was released. But we did do that earlier and we did do that in April. So that does not apply to the Eastern Public Schools, to the Oliver Ames students who are already back, those that have chosen to come back. And then finally, I would like to make a suggestion in terms of our travel policy. I have asked the school nurses to continue to consider their guidance on what we are doing for our travel policy in Easton. Again, we consider many different data points and we also consult with many different experts. The nurses, however, as I've said before, are in a very unique situation because they are medical professionals and they have access to all of our real-time data and information in Easton. And so they're in a unique position to see both sides of it where Mrs. Pruitt and I have access to the data, but we don't have the medical expertise, admittedly. And our medical experts don't have the data that we have. So the nurses are in a unique position to see that from the balcony view. And they take that very seriously and I appreciate their continued input on this. So they did meet again and they did say that they do maintain that the science has shown that testing after a potential exposure on day five is the most accurate in terms of determining a positive case. However, there are many changing factors now that were not in place prior to April vacation or really anywhere, any other time during this year. Those include that Massachusetts and United States numbers are declining, cases of positive case, incidents of positive cases. We, of course, have increased vaccination rates. I believe at this point, every staff member that was interested in getting a vaccination, a vaccination, and many of our students have gotten that already. Also, people who have previously had COVID, while they're not immune, we've seen some repeat cases, they are at a different level of protection than someone who hasn't gotten it. We also have increased participation in activities outdoors. And the Massachusetts guidelines have loosened up on travel advisories. Due to all of that and the numbers that we've been seeing and due to conferring with the Director of Public Health, who, who felt that this was a reasonable assessment from the nurses and supported it, we would recommend that our travel policy going forward requires students who travel out of the state or out of the country for any more than twenty-four hours be required to take a PCR test upon return to Massachusetts. That was what our policy was for staff. Of course, it, it doesn't apply to most staff now because they've been vaccinated. For any student that's been vaccinated, of course, that would stand, they would not need to get the test as long as they're more than two weeks after their last vaccination dose, depending on if they have the Johnson and Johnson or the other two-dose vaccinations. And anyone who has had COVID, as long as it's been more than ten days from the date of positivity and it's been less than ninety days, they also do not have to test. Again, those last two, in terms of vaccination and positivity, those are not new. We have been accepting that for several weeks now, prior to April vacation. But I wanted to kind of put all the exceptions together. So we are suggesting that we move forward with that policy. The nurses, of course, said that should there be an increase in unanticipated exposures or positives, this should be revisited. We certainly agree, we're not going to stop tracking our data at this point. And if we find that we need to make any changes to that, just like we're doing this evening, we will come before you and let you know. You don't necessarily need to vote on this as a policy change, it's not a school committee policy. But I did want to let you know that that was our recommendation. And if you did not support that and wanted to engage in the dialogue, we certainly could take that under advisement. If you're supportive of it, we will make sure that we publicize this and get the information out as soon as possible.
Anyone have any questions or comments on that? I can't speak for them, but I support it. I think it's, I think that we're at a time where that's the, a smart next move. And I think that the numbers-
I think that the numbers support it and it certainly, um, validates it that our nurses are supporting it because to your point, they have the educational point of view and the medical point of view.
I support it also. I'm, I'm, I'm thankful to the nurses for, you know, keeping track of everything and really continuing to advise us.
I agree. I think, um, I, I hope the positive trend in the right direction continues and that, um, that we can continue with this more relaxed travel standard through the rest of the year. But as we're demonstrating here, we'll revisit when data prompts it. So good work, good job by the nurses with, uh, considering everything and putting a recommendation forward.
Nancy, Caroline, are you all set?
Well, yeah, I, um, I mean, I think that it's, it's relevant that the te, nurses point out that the five-day testing is more accurate. But, um, at the same time, I do think that the evolving improvement on a number of levels in relation to infection and so on, really means that we can be reasonably, excuse me, reasonably comfortable with this change. So, um, I would support it as well.
You're all set, Nancy?
I'm also in, I'm also in, I'm also in favor. Everybody's said it already, so, yeah.
It all. Alright, thank you. Is that it? Dr. Cabral?
Uh, yes.
Alright. Public comment? None?
There's none.
Back to you, Dr. Cabral. Superintendent notes.
Okay. Uh, I just would point out to you that in your packet, we have just received several notifications about senior activities and, um, these include the senior letter that Mr. Paul sends to seniors every year, the activities schedule, the flyer for the Night Under the Stars that has been planned, the Safe Grad Parade flyer and the map of the OA Grounds, uh, that has also been included. For your information, I do know that the senior class advisors and other representatives of this high school have been in contact with the, uh, Director of Public Health and she has been advising them on all the guidance and guidelines. And they have been following those very closely. So this has all been done under the, guidance and review, um, of the Public Health Department here in the town. So, um, we are happy that we are able to have outdoor graduation again in person. It will be on the school campus proper, uh, versus Frothingham Hall, uh, excuse me, Frothingham Park. Uh, but for anyone that saw or participated in the ceremony last year, I think you would agree that it was very beautifully done. And some people, some students expressed to us, they appreciated having the, the space and having the, opportunity to have their graduation safely. So it will be done very much the same way. And again, all of that has been outlined for all of the parents. You have a very detailed letter, um, in front of you that he put together. So, um, unless there are any questions, it's really for your information, so you know what's upcoming.
Any questions? No? Is that it, Dr. Cabral?
That's all I have.
Alright. Assistant Superintendent notes.
I just want to, um, say thank you to our teachers and staff during Teacher Appreciation Week this week. Um, I have always known since I started here how wonderful our educators are here in Easton. However, this past year has brought just such a different, um, love and appreciation for everything that our staff does daily to support the students of Easton. There are many times, especially this year, that I have wished that I personally was a resident of Easton so that my children could be here with the educators that are supporting our kids. Um, it's, it's, as I've tweeted this week, it's, it's a week of recognition, but they really deserve every single day that they are working and then some. Um, they have gone above and beyond, especially this year. And I just want to thank them and commend them for their work and their continuous work, um, for everything that they do. So thank you to our Eastern educators and that's all I have today.
On the fun, fun side of things, I don't know if anybody saw the tweets about the, um, ice cream truck that we had go to each of the schools. It was kind of a-
As far as center today?
Kind of a fun little throwback for staff. Many people were commenting that, uh, they were the same strawberry shortcakes and chocolate eclairs and, uh, push pops that they had as kids. And so it's, it's such a small gesture that I, I wish could be more. But I think, I hope that they know that the feelings behind the gesture are enormous and that our gratitude is really boundless. Um, we hope that it was a little pick-me-up in, in the day. Um, but as Chrissy said, you know, as we've been saying all along, uh, it's not just this year. We see this level of dedication every year. But this year, I think the general public has seen more of it. Uh, and they certainly have done more, of course, extraordinary amount of work this year. So, uh, Appreciation Week ends, quote unquote, tomorrow. As I try to tell every student I see, make sure you march in your school and tell them how much you appreciate them because just like we all love and preserve the macaroni necklaces our children make for us, it's the same for students. When you receive an expression of appreciation, just a simple thank you from a student, it's, it means everything. And I know it will mean everything to them. But, um, let's just remember that it isn't only a week of appreciation and we plan to continue to let them know how much we appreciate them, uh, throughout the year and beyond. And I hope others will join us in that as well.
Thank you. Alright, school committee notes. Uh, Caroline?
Well, I, I really just want to sort of, um, I'm trying to think of the word, but it echo what both Dr. Cabral and, uh, Mrs. Pruitt have said. Um, just watching all that the educators that we have in Easton that have all that they've done to try to make this, this year less of a wild ride, which it certainly has been for everyone, obviously for students and parents as well. Um, I really, uh, it's going to be interesting to see if we all fully recover from this. Um, I think it's Grateful Dead who talked about a long, strange trip, but that's, um, that's kind of what it's felt like. And I'm sure, you know, I haven't had to be, um, coordinating an online and in-person platform simultaneously and then moving to and at the elementary level, a full, you know, in-person model. I just think that the flexibility and adaptability and resilience that our teachers have demonstrated has been phenomenal. But I also want to recognize that parents have been through an awful lot and as have their kids. And I think for the most part, we, this has been quite a learning experience and I hope that we all sort of benefit in future years from it. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Nancy?
Okay, um, thank you to all the teachers, parents, everybody. Guys are awesome. I think back to, uh, last March, March sixteenth, I believe it was, when we were going to shut down for two weeks and then told the teachers, okay, figure out how to, uh, teach these kids without them being in front of you. So, uh, they're awesome. Also, I want to thank our nurses because today is National Nurses Day. So thank you, nurses, for all you have done this year and beyond, my goodness. And I also want to congratulate the naming, uh, campaign for West Paul, um, doing, um, collecting that money to name the office space for Mr. Paul. I think that's great.
Nancy, I can't believe I forgot to say the nurses. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. They're like the most important people right now. Thank you.
Um, Jackie?
Yeah, I'm just echoing what everyone else said. Thank you to our educators and our nurses. I mean, not just for the school year, but all the work they did over the summer preparing us for the school year and, um, all the, all the time and effort and extra they've done for our kids and our parents, getting us through all of the changes throughout this year. So, thank you.
Alright, Jackie? I mean, Jennifer?
Um, so I will not repeat what everybody else has already said, uh, but echo those sentiments. Um, I do wanted to commend, um, there are a lot of support organizations related to our schools, PTA's PAC, boosters, Tempo, who have been involved in a flurry of fundraising activity lately. Um, I feel like every time I turn around, I'm seeing a new, really cool, creative fundraising idea. So I wanted to commend those organizations for being able to come up with new ways to raise the funds they need to support students and staff, um, in a pandemic. So a lot of the normal fundraising avenues and the, the programs that are tried and true and, um, work year after year after year were not options this year. And it just seems some really neat, um, fundraising going on, a lot of partnerships with local businesses. So thank you to all of those businesses who are pitching in and, um, donating some profits or, or promoting a various organization. Um, hopefully, these partnerships have been good for those businesses as well and attracting some new customers. But it's been really great to see the community as a whole come together in creative ways. Um, another reminder for the town meeting on the seventeenth at seven o'clock. Um, and let's see, there's, um, the Human Resource Committee and I might be stealing something from the shelf. I apologize if I am. Um, Human Resources Committee, I'm sorry, Human Rights Committee and Commission on Disability have a webinar tonight on, um, uh, physical disabilities, living and working with physical disabilities. So I'm looking forward to attending that. It's at seven PM. Um, if anybody wants to register for the webinar, you can go onto Facebook. I found the registration link a couple of different places. One of the, um, spots is the Lions Club page. Um, and so the Lions Club, the Y, and some other community organizations are partnering up to sponsor that. Do we thank them? And then finally, um, Happy Early Mother's Day, especially to all of our educators who this year, you know, who, who also are moms and who balance, especially during the fully remote phase of learning, handling their own kids, um, often at home and underfoot while being engaged and, and present for their students. I don't know how you did it. I have, uh, just endless admiration for being able to balance what most parents had to balance, but to do it while also teaching a classroom full of kids remotely was really, really amazing. So, uh, Happy Mother's Day to all of you. Enter the squad.
I'm learning going last. Everything's been said. So ditto. Alright, anything else?
I like being called the squad. I like that. Jen, Jen just referred to us as the squad, so.
Um, alright, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright. So we have town meeting and then our next school committee meeting is May?
Twenty.
Twentieth, correct?
Yes.
Alright. See you at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Hi there, everyone.